Thank you for waiting for an extra two minutes. I wasn't paying attention to the time. This is the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, February 19th, 2019. Would you all please rise for the National Anthem and a moment of silence? The Pledge of Allegiance, and a moment of silence. Unless you guys want to sing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. My last day as mayor, we are going to sing the Pledge of Allegiance. How's that sound? The National Anthem. Boy, I just can't get it right today. Randy Immler's making me do this. All right, so today, the first item on the agenda is a special council workshop with the Planning Commission. And my friend Chris, you're going to take this over? Susan's going to start first? Okay, Susan, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Planning Commission. Generally, Kara Drain from the Catawba Council of Governments would be giving this today, but Kara had a death in her family, so is now in Mississippi. So I guess you're stuck with listening to me. I'm going to try to move through this fairly fast because with only a 30-minute workshop, and I wanted an opportunity to get down to some question-and-answer materials that I have for you. Our agenda today, we're going to go over both the roles of the council and the Planning Commission, and the elements of the comp plan, our approach for updating the comprehensive plan, which is similar to what we did to establish the original 2025 plan in 2014, with some minor differences. Then we'll go over the vision statement and goals and core values of our current comprehensive plan. So the discussion topics we'll go over, again, will be the roles of council and the Planning Commission, and then how the comp plan implements the city's vision. You know, your comp plan is your blueprint for how we go forward. And then the required elements of the comprehensive plan, and our approach to updating the plan and updating the vision statement and the core values. I just wanted to go over overview of local planning in South Carolina. We've got a lot of new members who haven't been through this before, so I wanted to give you a little background of why we do comprehensive planning. In planning history, you know, planning's designed to maximize your land uses, minimize any conflicts, and to guide your growth. And, you know, in South Carolina especially, planning functions have been going on since the early 1920s, mostly in the realm of zoning to begin with, some subdivision, minor subdivision regulations, and quite often in the roles of municipalities. Counties came along a little bit later to play a role in comprehensive planning. And the reason why I say that is I wanted to go first, the Home Rule Act, 1976. That is where we have the basics, basics of the fundamental rules for counties in how they set out the police powers to regulate health, safety, and general welfare of counties and municipalities. The Home Rule Act also set up the first Comprehensive Planning Act as well, which gave some guidelines for you to establish comprehensive planning, including zoning and land development functions. Then, the most significant act of legislation happened in 1994. That was the Comprehensive Planning Enabling Legislation Act, which established the framework for the comprehensive plan, established the required elements, and mandated that all jurisdictions, including municipalities and counties, had a comprehensive plan, and that those comprehensive plans were coordinated with each other. The key sections of the act also was the enabling legislation to establish a planning commission. You can have a planning commission that's a municipal commission, you can have a county commission, and you can have a joint planning and county planning commission. But it has to be for the entire county, can't be for sections of it. It also established the requirement for development of the comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan's basis for the adoption of zoning codes, and also set rules for the administration of the zoning ordinance. It outlined the Board of Zoning Appeals functions and the Board of Architectural Review functions. It also set up land development or subdivision regulations. And the 1994 act has been amended over the years a number of times, the last amendment being in 2003, which set up the appeal process for land development decisions to be similar to that of the Board of Zoning Appeals for a planning commission. So land development decisions made by a planning commissioner now appealable to Circuit Court as well, and not appealable back to the council. It also set up the continuing education requirements. All members of city and county zoning and planning boards are required to have six hours of orientation, and are mandated to have three hours of continuing education each year. If those are not accomplished, then their decisions can be called into question, and there could then end up being legal ramifications. It also, the act also established vested rights, so that if a development plan has been approved, it outlines the timeframe for vestiture for that plan. And it also outlined the requirements for mediation. The city council's primary role, of course, is as the policy body for the city. The roles of the council under comprehensive plan include establishing the guiding vision. Also, the council then held a public hearing on the recommended comprehensive plan 30 days after publication of the notice. Then, they adopt the comprehensive plan by ordinance. And then, after the adoption of the comprehensive plan, it is the responsibility of council to review and amend city ordinances and other policies as needed to implement that comprehensive plan. Then, as annexations and rezoning decisions then come before the council, your duty is to make sure that they are in accordance with the future land use plan in your updated comp plan. If you have any questions, stop me along the way, okay? The Planning Commission's role is as an advisory board. They're advisor on planning matters to city council. The roles of the council, the commission are broken down into two areas. Legislative, which is, again, adopting the comprehensive plan by resolution and forwarding that to council, making recommendations on the zoning ordinance and any changes thereof. And the same with land development regulations. And it's also the Planning Commission's responsibility to make recommendations or legislative recommendations regarding subdivisions. Their administrative duties are primarily development approvals, where subdivision plaits come forward to the Planning Commission for like a preliminary plat or a final plat for our development. The Planning Commission is the approving body for that. They also then establish the capital improvement plans and any other tasks assigned by council. They also are required to go through any public facilities review for any new public facilities regarding location, character, and the extent of services. In this, it just kind of outlines, again, those planning documents and then your roles in it. So such as the comprehensive plan, then the council has adopts through the ordinance, the Planning Commission have created and recommended it, the Board of Zoning Appeals uses the comp plan as a guide for their decisions, and then planning staff uses the comp plan as a policy guide for daily work. So I won't go through each of these, but I think as you can see, we've got outbreak into comprehensive plan, land development regulations, the zoning ordinance, and then any zoning amendments. This slide, I just want to point out the importance of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is the legal foundation for zoning and land development regulations as outlined in the Planning Act. So all your zoning ordinances, your subdivision, and land development codes have to be based on the policies and strategies as outlined in your comprehensive plan, and what your future land use map calls for those areas. It protects the health, safety, and general welfare. The Home Rule Act, remember, gave you a responsibility for cities to have police powers regarding health, safety, and general welfare. The comp plan also addresses and guides the physical, social, and economic development of the city. It reflects local values. And that's just, we're going to get into that in just a little bit, but I wanted to talk to you about how the values, the local values, are important in your comprehensive plan. Because each comprehensive plan, while it's given a broad framework by the planning legislation, is tailored to your community, is tailored to our city, is based on what our goals are as officials and residents and staff for the city. So our public process is very, very important in this. Our approach to updating the comprehensive plan. First, we're going to review all the existing comprehensive plan documents and things that might be related to the comprehensive plan. You know, when this was adopted by ordinance in December of 2014, we've had several things happen since then, one of major of which is the adoption of the capital improvements program and subsequently, impact fees. So that's something that we really want to review and is important in this update. There are other things that will affect that, such as your strategic plan and the inventory we did regarding city services assessments. And there are several other things, such as school district documents, county documents, RFAZ, which is our Metropolitan Planning Organization as regards to transportation and what those planning documents are, and try to update all the existing material that's relevant to the update. Our current comprehensive plan format is laid out in basically three sections with the appendices. The first section outlines the, it's kind of the executive summary. And I've given you a copy of that, it's at your place this evening. That section introduces what the comp plan. It went through the community vision process for the 2025 plan, how we arrived at that vision, and what those core values are, and the explanation of those core values. Section two was really the meat of the document. That's where you have nine required elements in the comp plan. Each of those elements, under each of those elements, we establish goals and planning objectives, and then strategies, action strategies, and timeframes to implement those goals. And I think we've done a fairly decent job in trying to do all the short-term goals within this five-year period. But again, some of those short-term goals may be things that need to be carried over. Midterms or the midterm goals that we had and outlined may need to be changed to long-term goals, or even some of the long-term goals moved up to short-term or midterm. So that's why it's important for you to look at that section as well. And the third section just went over our public process. We did a community-wide survey. We talked about our methodology and how we went through the public input sessions and how our data and formulas for that data were put together. And then we did something that's a reverse of most comprehensive planning documents, and I thought it worked very well. And then our appendices is where we put all our existing conditions. So if you wanted to know what things were existed at that time in 2014, what you had to do was go to the appendice for that particular element. The comprehensive mandatory plan elements, there are nine required elements that are in the enabling legislation. Population, land use, transportation, economic development, housing, natural resources, cultural resources, community facilities, and priority investment. And under the priority investment, is where the requirement comes for coordination with adjoining jurisdictions on where we're funding things and where we can work together and cooperatively together to implement our comprehensive plans. We look at things sort of as an upside-down pyramid. So we start with an upside-down pyramid, and all these elements are all related to the environment, the economy, and the people. So you can just break that down, and they all reflect those conditions, those visions, and where the city needs to grow in those areas. This I sort of just outlined is what I think we had already given to all of you, which was a basic timeframe for our project. So I'm not going to go over this bit by bit, but what I do want to say is that Kara and I are still working on our public outreach plan. We're actually establishing that as a plan and a methodology and with individual timeframes and that. And when she gets back, we'll have that completed, and then we can get that out to everyone, and we can start filling out the focus groups and set up our initial meeting with the steering committee. Now, remember what we've done in the past. Two members of council, two members of Planning Commission, and two citizens are on the steering committee. And right now, under council, I have Mayor O'Neill and Mayor Pro Tim Overman for council, and I have our chairman, Mr. Leonard, and vice chair Kathy Masters for the steering committee. And then, I'm still waiting on a decision on the two citizen members. So if you've got some suggestions, I have two in mind, but if you've got some suggestions, please let me know about those. And I did also go to the connect meeting, and the last connect meeting, and I've gotten several volunteers for some of our focus groups. So I just wanted to kind of go through that. I also want to let you know, for those that are familiar with the format of our existing comp plan and how that's printed, we're going to use a different format for this one, a different design. So I think it's going to be a really nice visual product when we get through with it. We're going to update all the existing conditions, as we said, that are included in the current comp plan, and then develop the existing conditions for our new element. The new element, the 10th element we're including, is health and active living. Then we will work with the focus groups. We're looking to have at least two to three meetings with the focus group. And those groups are appointed by council and planning commission. So I will send each of you the list that we have suggested, so you can finalize that, make any suggestions for members that you think need to be added, that would have some valuable input on those focus groups, let us know. Then, we'll meet with the Planning Commission and the staff to review all the drafts, and with, of course, the steering committee. We'll create the implementation strategies with measurable goals and objectives. That's what is something I think I've been most pleased with in our current comprehensive plan, is that we actually have those action strategies. There's something that's measurable, something we are accountable for, and we can go back and relate that back to the citizens who helped develop this plan. The focus groups are these. Focus group one is economic development, housing, and transportation. Focus group two is land use, population, and priority investment. Focus group three is community facilities, cultural resources, and natural resources. And then the fourth group is on our new element, which is health and active living. Just going to a brief organizational chart, of course, council, planning commission, steering committee, and then each of the focus groups. We will revise and update all the maps, tables, the graphics, and the narrative, incorporate this new design and layout. We're going to conduct, we usually do at least two community-wide meetings for all citizens to come in and review the draft plan, and then the adoption by the Planning Commission and by resolution and by ordinance by city council. This is the meat I wanted to get into, and good, I got just about right time. This is the vision statement that was established through all the public input in our, for our current comprehensive plan. That vision statement says that Tegukay is a safe, family-friendly, regionally-accessible, lakeside community with exceptional educational, entertainment, and recreational opportunities, and a special place to work, play, and call home. Now, one thing I wanted to point out is this is the 2025 plan. This is the vision for how Tegukay is in 2025. It may not necessarily be the vision today, it's the vision, it's how we want to be in 2025. Well, that's just what we want people to say about us. So that vision is what gave us the core values. The things that our citizens valued the most. Safety, education, family-friendly, entertainment, and recreation. The regional context, that we are part of a larger region, and that this is a special place. So what, I'm going to ask you for any questions, but I did want to let you know, in front of you, I have some homework for you. We really need your input. For one, I want to know, is the vision statement still what we want it to be? Is it still relevant today as it was for 2025, as it was in 2014? And if you don't think it is, and you think there are things that need to be amended, please give us some suggestions, try to describe those. And under the core values, they're the safety, education, family-friendly, entertainment, and recreation, regional context, and special place. If you still agree with these values, I want you to indicate a priority order. What do you think is most important of those core values? And then make any comments regarding those values. And then, secondly, list any additional core values to be considered in the updated comprehensive plan. Now, I'd like for you to complete these, if you want to complete them tonight and hand them in, or if you want to send them to me later, scan them, email them to me, that'd be great.
How about at our March 2nd, March 4th meeting? How about at our March 2nd meeting?
Is that too late to get them back to you?
Yeah, that's a week or two.
That'd be great. Any other questions?
I have a question. If a citizen wanted to be one of the two on the steering committee or wanted to serve on a focus group, how would they go about doing that?
If they can contact me by email, sbrit@tegukaysc.gov. Or they can call City Hall, and they'll pass them through to me, and I'll take their information. And, you know, once, we are going to limit these to at least 15 people per group, because if we get more than 15, it's kind of hard to work together.
Have you had a good pool of applicants so far? Have you had some people?
I've had some good interest, but not as much as I thought I would have. So I think that as it gets a little closer to spring, I think people will start to pull out. And then, and once we set the first meeting and try to send out some information, I should probably get some folks that way.
When is the deadline you need those by?
I'd like to have them by your March meeting. Because we're trying to get our first meeting set in April.
How many people are we talking about? 15 per group times how many groups?
That's 60? Nope, one group, because all groups, all four groups will meet simultaneously. We're trying to meet one Saturday, one Saturday morning, and then at least once during a week time. And we'll try to block out all the rooms down here that we can, so I'm trying to work with that schedule, and then we can all meet at the same time.
I see six volunteers out in the audience right now. Les, Norm, Walt, Frank, seven, Randy, all right.
Any other questions?
I think we're good.
Planning Commission got any, hey, I did good, I got five minutes left. Anything else?
Questions for you guys?
Anything from Planning Commission? Nothing? Anything from council?
Yeah, I don't think we have any questions. We're kind of, we're ready for focus groups, and made our assignments or recommendations, so you've got that.
Right. And Chris has already polled Planning Commission and assigned them places.
So Chris, just my observation, are, is there only five people on planning? Are you just missing a couple? There's two missing, okay, so we're full, you're fully, fully seven?
Fully staffed at seven.
Okay, got you.
We had, Mr. Burns is out. He was going to be out of town, he was going to have trouble getting back on time. And Mr. Thompson is also traveling.
Okay, split, understand it.
But I put each of us are on two, one being their primary based on their interest, and the second being, you know, where we kind of fill in.
Chris had them do their first and second choice.
Okay, very good.
Susan, approximately, how many more people do you need?
51.
I'd have to go back and look, because it seems like everybody wants to be on one focus group, so I'm going to have to go back to those folks and try to ask them to go to another one.
Minus the seven, eight I see in the audience, so we're about 45 we need.
Well, if they're watching on TV, give me a call.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Planning Commission. We'll give it a few minutes so you guys can go about your lives and dinners and going out and doing fun stuff tonight, playing in the rain.
Geez, yeah, terrible, all day.
It was snowing earlier today.
Sleet, freezing rain, whatever the heck it was.
Thanks, Chris. I noticed I went a little bit off, out of order on the agenda. I wanted you guys to be able to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I wanted you to have the opportunity to recite, see if you remembered it. The National Anthem? I'll see you next week, yeah.
We appreciate the opportunity to work with the city. So far, the process has gone really well.
Hey, give my condolences to, that's terrible that she, she had a death in the family. Give my condolences to her. I understand. Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you. Okay, thanks, Glenn. Okay, right on time, it's 7 o'clock by the atomic clock. Those of you who are just arriving, we already did the Pledge of Allegiance and the Moment of Silence. Sorry you guys got to miss that, but I thought I went kind of out of order. So we can either do it again, or we can just drive on, let's just drive on. Okay, I recall the meeting to order. This meeting is back to order. This is the Tuesday, February 19th, 2019, regular city council meeting. And we are, everybody's here except for Alicia, but she is on her way. We just got a text, she's on her way, so I don't think there's anything in here that's a second read that she's, okay, we'll just do what we can do. So we'll start off with public comments. Are there any public comments? Can I have the envelope, please? Thank you. Only one? First up, Mr. Les Woods. Les, please give us your name, your address, and your blood type.
Good evening, Les Woods, 1112 Tom Howard Drive. I'm here to talk about recycling tonight. And first of all, I want to compliment council and city staff on the absolutely awesome job you all have done to take a very critical situation and with your due diligence. you all have done to take a very critical situation and with your due diligence, have found some solutions which we're going to hear about later tonight. And we heard about a TC connect last week. So I think you've done an awesome job. What I'd really like to do now is represent the Tika K Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated and drill right down to one area, and that's aluminum. And conferring with former chief Bill Kreisman, he said approximately thirty years ago, the volunteer fire department decided there's a way that they could help our residents, help those that were less fortunate ended up in a children's burn hospital. And they established a can drive and got an actual trailer from MUSC Children's Hospital in their burn center. And over the course of the last roughly thirty years, we have donated over fifty thousand dollars to the burn center. So it's made a tremendous impact. Normally, they don't give a second can trailer to somebody that already has one. And once they started adding up what we had done for them, we started requesting a second can trailer three years ago. And each year, they said, we're only making a couple and there's a couple other people really need it, but we're going to get to you, we're going to get to you. So fortunately, last month, they did get to us.
I saw that.
And we now have a second can trailer.
Very good.
So for all of the residents, if you have aluminum, and that would be beverage cans, we, we had an unfortunate situation that almost was tragic last week when we took our can trailer. And someone had dumped several big garbage bags of plastic bottles in it and tin cans, which may look like aluminum, but they're not. Cat food cans, dog food cans, vegetable cans, that's not aluminum. So we're restricting it to beverage cans.
Is that what you were picking out of the trailer last week?
You saw me dumpster diving, yes you did. And, and we ended up filling up two big trash containers of things that we're not supposed to go. And even with that, when we got to the recycling center, they found a few things and they did one of those and said, you know, you got to make sure it's only aluminum cans when you come in here. But each can trailer that we empty, depending on the price of aluminum that particular day, we get two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars for a can trailer. Of course, there's a lot of empty space and all in that. But it's a tremendous effort that the residents can do to help the, the environment and help the children's hospital.
Absolutely.
We're very happy and pleased to be able to coordinate that. So either at fire station one or fire station two, there's a can trailer there, put it in, and once it gets about full, the volunteers will take it to the recycling center and get the check directly mailed off to MUSC.
And it's a really good cause for a local, for a local cause. So sort your aluminum out, take them up to the fire stations, either one or two, and you'll see an immediate impact on it. It's really a good cause. So I know you could probably fill up a couple of those trailers just on what Richard's do on the weekend. So this would be, this is a good cause. I know he's got his own can working over there, so. Thanks for, for everything you do, Les, that's a good cause. Are there any other public comments that anybody came late and didn't sign up? Want to give everybody opportunity to, to talk? I don't see any, okay, let's move on. Item number two is the approval of minutes. Council, you've seen the minutes. Do you have any additions, deletions or changes? Seeing none, the minutes stand as published. Item number three is unfinished business. This is, let's see, three A, this is the second reading, am I, my gone, there you go. This is the second reading of an amendment to Stonecrest Plan Development District Standards. The current property owners of parcel number six four four dash one one dash zero one dash one 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 designated as the courtyards of Tika K on the development master plan have petitioned the city to amend the Stonecrest, Stonecrest Plan Development District, Development Standards to permit and regulate age-restricted communities as designated under, designated use in residential high-density districts. The planning commission has developed and recommended specific development standards applicable to all such designated properties within the Stonecrest Plan Development District. Now, what this is, is this community was approved two or three years ago, and since then, we've had impact fees implemented by both the school district and the city. And the school district, of course, charges eighteen thousand, three hundred, eighteen one eighty-five for each house, for each residence. And that kind of puts them in a difficult place. And so to get out of paying that, they made it age-restricted, fifty-five years and older. So in the covenants, we'll say nobody under fifty-five can live there. So they're not going to, they're not going to keep putting more people in our, more kids in our school. So seems like a decent plan to us where we get the development, the developer gets to build his, his place without putting kids in our school. Like I said, this was planned, this was about three years ago, two years ago. So this is just a way to accommodate him. So do we have any questions? From the audience, any questions? From the council, any questions? I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of an amendment to the Stonecrest Plan Development District Standards.
I have a motion from Ryan Richard, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, from Mayor Pro-Tam Overman. Last chance for any questions before we vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Three B. All right, this is the second reading of an ordinance to relinquish, relinquish any rights of the city of Tika K to provide water and sewer service to TMS six four four dash one one dash zero one dash one one one, which is inside the municipal limits of the city. This is the same parcel that we just, for, for the age-restricted. Because there is a York County Water Sewer Service on the undeveloped property and the city's infrastructure is not immediately adjacent to the property, developer has requested that the city allow the county to service his forty-five home development. In order to do so, the city must first relinquish this service area to the county. This is for the same project discussed in the previous agenda item. Does everybody understand that? Any questions from the audience? Questions from council? I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to relinquish any rights of the city of Tika K to provide water and sewer service to TMS six four four dash one one dash zero one dash one one one, which is inside the municipal limits of the city.
I have a motion from Councilman Machinas, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Richard. Any final questions, any comments? No comments? We'll entertain, let's see, it's time to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Three to one. Let's go to three, new business, four A. Okay, new business, four A, this is resolution approving the lease purchase of golf course equipment. This resolution is required by the city's lenders for lease purchase agreements. The golf course will be purchasing two rough mowers to replace the current equipment that is reaching the end of its useful cycle, useful life. They will be paying for the mowers from revenues received from the golf course, and this will not impact the city budget. So all the money you pay for greens fees, all the profits will go to buying this mower. Are there any questions from the audience? Any questions from council? Any comments from council? Okay, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution approving the lease purchase of golf course equipment.
I have a motion from Councilman Richard, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Machinas. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Seems like it's roaring right along today.
It is.
I like it fast.
Quick, fast and in a hurry.
Well, we can do that. Item four B, resolution to suspend white goods collection fees. As we have been working on how we can make recycling convenient again, our staff met with the Fort Mill High School Band Booster Club to discuss a new fundraising fundraiser they are doing. This resolution would temporarily suspend the fee charged by the city for the collection of white goods. That's refrigerators, freezers, washer and dryers, that kind of stuff. Residents would still need to schedule to have those items collected curbside, but with this new program, our staff would take the items to the location for the band boosters to pick up and then salvage for money that could help them fund the trips for wherever they want to go. Nice, pretty good deal. Win-win for everybody. So we get to clean up the city, won't cost anybody any money to have their stuff picked up, and it gives it to the band and they can go on these elaborate trips they like to take, right?
Yes, currently, we charge a fee per item because we have to, we haul it all the way out to the York County landfill. At this point, we wouldn't have that trip, so no need to charge the residents for it if council's on board.
Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments about that? I think it's a great deal. I don't think anybody would be opposed to that. Any comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the resolution to suspend white goods collection fees.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Heather Overman, do I have a second?
Second.
I had to think about that for a minute. Say, what's her?
Getting up in age, getting up in age.
Being sixty-one is tough. Who's second, I'm sorry?
Ryan.
Ryan, I have a second from Councilman Richard.
You wouldn't remember my name anyway.
You'll have to tell me later, that's what's good about, it's like Groundhog Day every day. Every movie I see, I get to see tomorrow and it's a new movie. Okay, so it's time to vote. Everybody in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There won't be anybody opposed. Four C. Every day is a new day. Okay, intergovernmental agreement for recycling service. We all realize that there has been a significant, has been significant changes in recycling over the past several months. We have reached an agreement with York County for them to start accepting our recycled materials that are collected curbside. In doing this, recycling will become convenient once again. Beginning on March eleventh, on March eleventh, provided the county also adopts this agreement on March fourth, you will be able to start putting certain plastics and aluminum and steel cans back in your roll carts. In the next few weeks, the city will begin a huge communications push to the community to give you all the details on what can go into your carts and where other things should be taken, like, I guess glass can still go over to the other.
Glass can still, we'll still have to go over to the Baxter Convenience Center, but we should have any day now a glass container, collection container at our public workshop.
And remember, your cans go, your aluminum cans go to the fire station, right? Well, let's welcome Alicia to the council. She had a little meeting she had to attend tonight. Good evening. We're on recycling on four C, so you came just at the right time, all the, now the fun stuff starts.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, this is mine, you know, can't steal this one from me.
So I'm sure there's a lot of questions from everybody, because I still have a lot of questions. So we're going to put that, push that out in the next couple of days and weeks about what exactly you can do and when you can do it. Remember, it doesn't start till March.
March eleventh.
That is correct. Lacey's going to be putting that out, so if you have any questions, call Lacey.
We've got stickers that will be coming out that we'll be putting on the recycle bins that says what can go in there, what can't go in there. Sandwich Waste is actually going to fund those for us. We've got flyers that Tika K Connect has agreed to help pass out to their neighborhoods. So all of this will begin probably the twenty-seventh of February, pushing that hard. There'll be press releases and working on scheduling an actual press conference alongside of county leadership and management at the recycle facility. As soon as we have that date, we'll pass it along to city council.
So thank you all for your patience. This has been a two-month nightmare ordeal, whatever you want to call it, that just kind of got sprung on us at the last minute, whatever market, what changes in the market, whoever kind of hit us real fast and caught us off guard, to tell you the truth. But Heather, working around with, working with city staff, has come up with this in a, on a remarkable amount of time, just two months is really unbelievable. I would, I would have thought we would have been doing this in June, but we're doing it in March, so this is quite an accomplishment. Heather, and like I said, and the staff worked real hard on this, so appreciate all the hard work from everybody because, like I said, we didn't think we'd get this solved. So with, so with that, I will entertain a motion from Heather Overman.
Motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement for recycling services.
I have a motion from Councilman Overman, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Machinas. Last chance for any questions, comments, since you just walked in.
Can I make a quick comment?
You make comments all you want.
Okay, awesome. So I just want to thank city staff, specifically Charlie Funderburke, Assistant City Manager, Katie Paulson, and then of course, Lacey Armstrong, pretty much all of the education pieces, everything you've seen that's been pushed out there, she's done. So I know I was persistent, we'll call it persistent and not annoying. And I pushed and I pushed and I pushed and I continued to push, but I'm really glad that we found a solution that works for everybody, that really solves this problem. While we can't control the recycling market, and as Mayor O'Neil mentioned, that it was sprung on us, we did work really quickly to, to find a solution. I think this is a really great example of intergovernmental relationships and what we can do when we work together with the county, you know, in this instance, with other municipalities, and, and that, that, you know, relationship and, and the connections that we make are, are really important. I'm really hopeful that they will pass this on March fourth, I, I don't really have any doubt that they will. But we are looking forward to solving this problem and putting it behind us and moving on to the next best thing. So thank you very much, all of you.
And I just would be remiss if I didn't talk about contamination. We, we're not out of the woods, you guys have to make an effort too. Our contamination has to be fifteen percent or less, is it fifteen percent? And we've been at sixty percent. Contamination means you're putting something in that recycling bin other than something that can't be recycled. So in recycling bin only goes what's going to be on that sticker on top, no trash, this isn't a, another way to haul your trash away. You get your trash in your trash, in your ninety-six gallon trash bin, and your recycling bin only goes recycling. If there's, if we go above fifteen percent contamination, we go back to the starting where we start, where we, where we started in December, and we can't do that, this is too important, we want to keep this. Okay, do you have any questions or comments, Alicia? Okay, okay, it's time to vote. All in favor, this better be unanimous. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And no's? Okay, it's unanimous. I thought it would be. This is really a great thing that we, that we got accomplished up here. Okay, item four D, new business, introduction of a first reading of an ordinance to amend chapter fourteen, article two of the code, business licenses, my favorite topic. Not really. The amendment is to keep our code current with the, the model ordinance on business licenses the state has asked all municipalities to use. Primarily, it clarifies the definition of gross income and changes the business license year, which was April first through March thirty-first, and it's now May first through April thirtieth. You want to comment on that a little bit more, explain more of that?
That, that pretty much covers it. The, one of the big things that has been coming out of Columbia is making sure that regardless of which city you're doing business in, you, you're doing it the same way, same time of year, things like that. And then there was a recent court case, and I'm, I'm having trouble recalling where it was, I'm thinking Moncks Corner area or somewhere down in the Low Country, that centered specifically on how that city had defined gross income. So it's cleaning that up. So they've pushed out the, the new model ordinance, and they're asking all the municipalities to, to try to get it adopted as, as soon as possible. For us, this is very timely, as it will push everybody back one month on their renewal. So getting this done, February, March timeframe, so that Barbie has time to notify all of our six hundred, almost seven hundred businesses that have a business license of what that new calendar year is.
Okay, and so, you know, so this just basically just changes the wording and the date of the definition.
Yeah, it's, it's cleaning up some of the definitions and making sure that what we have codified matches exactly what Danny Crowe, who's the expert for the state, what he has pushed out, and that the municipal association has asked everybody to adopt.
Okay.
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the audience or on council? Seeing that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd make a motion to approve the introduction in first reading of an ordinance to amend chapter fourteen, article two of the code, business licenses.
I have a motion from Councilman Richard, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Dash. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. And that is the end of our regular business. We are going to item five, which is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a couple of quick things. The, the mayor is hosting a mayor's dinner, rotates around the county with the other mayors this coming, or actually it's tomorrow, up, up here at the Shore Club. And just so the public is aware, if you didn't get your door hanger, come see John and Kristen up at the clubhouse, they're having an open house on February twenty-eighth. So plan to drop in that night on the twenty-eighth, reacquaint yourself, they're going to have basically orders from one end of the facility to the other, they're going to have some music, they've come up with a signature cocktail, really just kind of reintroducing themselves to the community, and they want everybody to come out and have a great time there. And while, while we're on the Shore Club, the, the upgrades that we made in December have definitely really made a difference, both at the Shore Club and the Glenon Center, as evidenced by their most recent hospitality tax payment for the month of December. It's the highest we've ever had from any group from up there. And January is, based on what I've seen, January's been every bit as busy and February has, has been killing it as well. So we've made some upgrades, they've made some changes, and it seems to be working very, very well, so we're excited to that, excited for that. And at this point, for the first time ever, the food businesses are passing the bar business up there, which is, which is good to see. Lot more folks eating dinner, eating lunch and, and bringing in groups. They had twice the amount of rentals upstairs over the holidays this They had twice the amount of rentals upstairs over the holidays this year than what they had last year. So, everything is definitely trending in the right direction there. So, excited for them, excited for the facility on that. I will be out of the office the end of, um, end of, middle to end of next week at the ICMA Southeast Regional Conference in Greenville, but will be available via email, cell phone, text, that type thing if you need me. Uh, I will be back, headed, traveling back this way on Friday. We have completed our spring sports registration for our youth, and, and we've got almost two-hundred more participants this year than we've ever had. So, we're right at, um, just, just at eighteen-hundred kids for the spring, which is remarkable. Which brings me to my next topic. On Thursday, March seventh, and calendar, uh, council, I've sent y'all calendar invites on this. TK Forever Foundation's gonna be hosting an event to introduce businesses from in and around the area to Catawba Park and how they can partner with us on it. This is gonna be the start of their fundraising efforts. That team has been working very hard on that. It is an invite-only, we've got, Lacey, probably thirty businesses, thirty, forty? Anywhere between thirty and forty businesses that have RSVP'd that'll be coming. So, we're looking forward, uh, looking forward to, um, to meeting with them and talking all things Catawba Park. Senator Wes Clymer will be here as one of the guest speakers, as well as David Swenson, the Director of York County Economic Development, will be on hand to talk to him. Council, the event actually starts at six-thirty, so if y'all could be here between six, six-fifteen, that would be great. And then, lastly, just as a reminder, um, we do have a special, um, special council meeting workshop coming up on Saturday, March second. We'll be discussing initiatives that support the goals and objectives that council laid out for staff in our strategic planning workshop this past spring. And that meeting will be right here in the council chambers, and it will start at nine AM. It will be videoed, aired live, all that good stuff, and we'll replay it as we normally would any other council meeting. So, if folks have other things they wanna do on Saturday versus come and hang out with us, they will have an opportunity to watch it afterwards. And that concludes what I have for this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Charlie. Uh, let's go into council comments, we always start with Councilman Ryan Richard.
I do have one this week. I'm sure as you guys' families do as well, my family sits in front of the TV and watches council meetings in their entirety every time we're in here. And so, I'm sure my sixteen-year-old is watching, so I just wanted to say happy birthday to my son, Kaden, who turned sixteen today, aside from that.
Sixteen.
Congrats on everything you guys accomplished with the recycling and how we were able to kinda dig ourselves out of a hole there, so great job, council.
Happy birthday, Kaden. Alicia?
And I'll just add to that, that today is my mother's birthday.
Look at that.
So, I'll add a happy birthday shout-out to mom.
Happy birthday, man.
I'm sure she's watching us from Georgia. But I do just wanna say that I'm super excited about the progress that I've seen for the police department, and it's really exciting, just driving by every day and, and seeing, um, a lot of new development happening.
I like that yellow siding, that's gonna be pretty.
Yeah, yeah.
It's cute.
So, uh, so, exciting stuff happening in the city of TGK, so thank you. Thanks, everyone, for all the work.
It's not gonna be yellow, it's gonna be painted. I'm just making fun of Chief Parker, who thought it was gonna be yellow.
Well, it's not my birthday, or anybody in my family, or really anybody I know, so I got nothing there. I just wanna repeat, Heather, amazing job. Thank you for, as David calls you, becoming our recycle czar, but I think that's just...
The queen of trash.
That was just an awesome job.
It all started with the girls' videos.
The trash queen, that's, that sounds better, the trash queen. A recycling queen.
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything?
I, I'm just glad, put it behind us.
Yeah.
Put it behind us.
It was, there was some...
Erase that bad memory.
There were some sleepless nights, I have to admit, you know? We kinda get dumped on you that, hey, we're not gonna be taking any recycling anymore. And it's over, really, literally overnight, it would just kinda hit, and... Right before the holidays, Merry Christmas, we're not taking any of your recycle. So, uh, anyway, again, we can't say it enough, great job by Heather and the city. And I noticed we have some other guests, we have, is this the Boy Scouts out here? Is this troop two-fifty? All right, how about that?
My name is Carolyn Minnick, I live at thirteen-fourteen Mallard Ridge Drive, and I have to have it on that. And, um, we are learning citizenship in the community, so the boys had to attend a council meeting. So, I appreciate that you were timely and quick and efficient, good job.
Twenty-six minutes, and we're never this early. We usually are here for another hour, so...
I know, I'm good.
We saw the Boy Scouts, and we know they had school tomorrow, so...
Yes, I appreciate that. On your recycling thing, thank you for working on that. I'm an environmental engineer, so happy to see the recycling. Are they gonna pick up on different days? 'Cause I wonder if that's part of the, I would just put that out there, sometimes it's dark and they can't tell what's the recycling bin and what's the trash bin.
Oh, they can tell. Yeah, they'll be able to.
Yeah, hopefully, there'll be day glow, because they pick the trash up when it's still dark on our street. But that's another, I know this wasn't public comment, so thank you very much, you've done a good job and a good example.
And I'm gonna see you in Saturday?
Saturday morning.
Next Saturday?
This Saturday.
This Saturday, okay, can't wait.
You did volunteer for one of the focus groups just now as well, right?
I, I believe, yes.
Just get with Susan, and we're glad to have you.
And with that, I will entertain a motion to go to adjourn and go into executive session. Second? All in favor? Aye. Nobody ever opposes adjourning, not once have we ever had a no vote, so... Well, we're just going into executive session, as of now, we're going to executive session.